Welcome to the planning board meeting of May 18th, 2021. We'll take a roll call. Hudson Van Sekel.
Here.
Okay, Paul Stanridge.
Here.
Dan McInerney.
Here.
Tim McInerney.
I'm here.
Jim Genatino is here, Rob Magrino is here, and I'm sure Joanne is here.
Andrew Dale.
I am here.
And Andrew Dale, and Joanne Chiaffi.
I'm here.
Okay, that means we're all here. The number one item on the agenda is the TDD proposed district. Uh, Rob, did you find out whether John Lang is gonna be on or not?
Yeah, it doesn't look like it. Um, I did not hear from him, uh, but he knew when we put it on for, but again, just going back to the point I made earlier last time, you know, this will come back if the, you know, if the village board continues it with this, it will come back for this board's review. The question is, do you have any, does the board have any suggested changes to what will be presented if it goes out to the code? As I said last time, you're part of the drafting. So if you have any proposed changes, you know, let us know, uh, or if you want the board to say, you know, you wanna, you know, you don't recommend this at this time, but, you know, the issue with that is it's not, it doesn't address why it's here. It's here for you to,
To make recommendations.
To help in drafting.
Any questions?
What's that?
I said it's for us to either approve it or if we have any recommendations for changes.
Yeah, but as I'm saying, you know, like I know last time, a lot of people were concerned that, you know, hey, we just got this, you know, again, it's been a month. The issue is, whatever happens here, the village board is going to take certain action. It can, you know, if you make recommendations, they can agree with them, they can disagree. But again, it's, it's not going back to the village board to be, to be approved and voted upon. It's for, you know, as I said, if you have suggested changes, let us know, we'll put it in a letter. If you want, or if you just wanna say, you know, we don't think it should go forward at this time, you could say that, but I don't know that, you know.
Ultimately up to them.
Yeah.
It's ultimately up to the board.
Rob, I think how we left it last time was that I had sent you comments and I thought everyone else was gonna send you comments if they had any additional ones. Did you receive comments from the rest of the board?
I don't think so. Did I get yours?
Mine was that PDF we reviewed last time.
Oh, okay. I think someone was sent to Joanne.
I did get, yeah, I do have yours from last time, Paul, hold on a second.
Did anybody else send, Rob, comments or additional comments?
I know.
I know we addressed yours while we spoke.
But I think those are the comments. It's about parking and a comprehensive plan.
All right. So let me, why don't we just do this? Go through uh, polls and see if the board wants to adopt all, some, all, or none. So one issue was one space for every two apartments is not enough. Uh, so we could say about the parking. Dude, I, you know, I get the feeling most would agree with that comment, right?
I think so.
Correct. My, my suggestion would have been a minimum of one space on site for one bedrooms and at least one and a half, if not two, for two bedrooms. And Hudson had some uh, good comments and one of his comments were, if you look at the plan such as it is, and it's really not addressing a lot, they have a one bedroom unit with a office space which is almost equal size to the bedroom with a window in it. So that kind of led me to believe that it could possibly turn into another bedroom. So instead of one bedrooms and two bedrooms, they could be all bedrooms.
They could be all what?
I know Hudson, you, I'm sorry, Rob, I didn't hear.
I'm sorry, they could be all what?
The one bedrooms can turn into two useful bedrooms because they're almost the same size as the one bedroom. Very slight difference and it has a window in it. I know it may require a closet in the zoning, I'm not sure. But I mean, you know, you can get a closet that you can put against.
That's more of a, uh, like a site specific um, issue. That's not really under law. Like that would be a comment when they came for site plan.
So parking, parking is a, uh,
Oh, yeah, yeah, no, yeah.
Jim's, Jim's parking comment sounds good.
Yeah, I noted it.
Yeah. Just think we, you know, as much as we, and I, I've researched the parking. So if you wanna get into that, the B lot is full. There are permanent parking permits of 110 parking permits in the B lot. And the total capacity is like a hundred and I'm trying to look it up right now. There's very little room for anybody else. Let's put it that way. And that's three businesses have 110 reserved spaces. The H lot is a little different. I mean, they all have these permanent parking spaces. Now, my concern is, and I, I've discussed this even with the mayor, so it's no surprise to him that someday we're gonna go back to normal and our restaurants are gonna need valet parking. Where are they gonna be able to park cars? These businesses that has kept this village going for 20, 30, 40 years. So we can't be renting out all these spaces and leave them high and dry. That's one of my big concerns. But anybody else have anything they wanna add?
Uh, Jim, I think you said that perfectly.
Okay. I get a gold star.
Rob, I think that was one of my comments too, that the ability to buy spaces is not really a substitute for providing parking. And I made a few notes on that as well.
Yeah, you know what? Why don't I just go through polls real quick and then if there's anything after that, we can add it. The one,
Okay.
The next one he said was about um, perhaps the village should commission a comprehensive review of the current zoning and ask the planner to recommend changes to the CB district. That's kind of what we're allowing wider range of developments as of right. That's, that's kind of what we're doing now is creating more uh, as a right. So I, I would, my recommendation would be that, that's a relevant comment, but I don't know.
Well, no, that's not right, Rob, because what I'm saying is that we change the zoning requirements for the central business district, not create this floating zone that, that creates this island of spot zoning within the uh, within the village. I, I don't think we should have these floating islands of spot zoning because it, and I, and I said something about incompatible uses, it leading to incompatible uses and so forth. I, I don't have my comments.
Right, but I, I, here's the issue. And again, I, you know, I, I have the comment, if you wanna make the comment, we can make it, but I think that um, you know, the feeling is, if anything, that takes away from the ability to uh, look at each one of these. If you, if you just make this change or a change like this and you can do it anywhere in the CB zone, it basically never goes back to the village board and just comes to planning board for site plan. By making it a floating zone, the village and the planning board will go through this process each time. And I get, I hear what you're saying, that it sounds like islands, but that's the purpose. It allows the flexibility to say, you know, is it appropriate here or there? You know, maybe it is appropriate one spot, not in another. If you make the change for the entire zone, you basically lose control, so. I'd like to you guys if you wanna make that comment, but I don't.
Can you read the comment verbatim, Rob? I don't have it in front of me.
In the past, county planning has been critical of creating islands of zoning or spot zoning to facilitate project development. I think this was raised on the Washington Circle project. I believe the objection is that they undermine the benefits of a comprehensive zoning plan and open the door for incompatible adjacencies like a cigar bar next to a residence with children, for example. Perhaps the village should commission a comprehensive review of the current zoning and ask the planner to recommend changes to the CB district that would allow a wider range that's or develop, should be of developments as of right. So I, I hear what you're saying, but I guess the issue is, yes, when, yeah, again, that's what the purpose of this is for, is certain sites will be eligible and the board will have to review them each time instead of doing it um, you know, on the one hand, doing it the way you did, let's say, Washington Muse. Um, it's kind of like an overall saying, look, we're okay in the CB and GB with allowing this if you fit this criteria. You still have to come to the village board to apply. You still have to go to planning board for site plan. Um, so I, you know, I think if, if anything, you know, it's kind of, to me, it's, it's, it, from a planning perspective, it's a, it's a little confusing. It, it, because I think that if you say, hey, in the central business district, we should just allow it anywhere, to me, it actually makes it uh, worse.
I don't think I'm saying allow it anywhere, Rob. I'm saying have a professional planner review it and see what makes sense. I'm not saying allow it anywhere.
Right, well, you're saying allow a wider range of developments as of right.
Yeah, or to see if, if they think that's reasonable. I mean, I'm not a planner, so I, I don't know.
Right.
I'm gonna do analysis to determine.
Right, I mean, if, right, so my recommendation is, let's say, with respect to this law in particular, you know, I guess, you know, you could say, you know, recommend to have a, have a, I mean, you kinda, you know, I, I, you've had John Lang look at it, so I, that's why I'm having difficulty with this comment. My suggestion is not to put it in. I mean, we've already had a planner look at it, what, for good or bad, whether you like it or not, right? Um, but the issue is um, you know, what, what comment, like it doesn't apply to this law. Like if you wanna say, you know, I, I don't know, you know, we haven't, they are gonna be interviewing planners to create a comprehensive plan. Um, and they may or may not recommend this, but I guess the issue is, I'm, you know, I'm not sure how that comment fits in with this.
Rob, I think, I think what he's trying to say is, and correct me if I'm wrong, Paul, is you would rather have the comprehensive plan look at it before they set anything in stone. Is that what you're getting to, Paul?
I think that's it. That's it in a nutshell, Jim. And you know, honestly, I, I, I'll defer to my fellow board members on whether they wanna include the comment. I just wanna make sure it's understood, the intent of it.
Paul, I couldn't agree with you, I couldn't agree with you enough. I, I believe that it's, the whole purpose of us having a comprehensive plan is for them, we, I mean, thi- this could be, this could be presented to the comprehensive planner, whoever, once we finally choose one. And if they decide that this is a good idea or a bad idea, then we could, we could go ahead at that point, but I think that it's so premature and actually, you know, um, maybe even irresponsible to, to go forward with this, with, when we're so close to getting somebody to come in to do a comprehensive plan. I agree with you.
All right, I'll prepare a comment along those lines. I'm, my, my point is, that's not exactly what it said, but I'll prepare a comment along what we just discussed.
Can I make a comment to save, to have a curiosity, I guess? If I'm, if our primary problem is parking in the village, the zone changes is not gonna solve the problem of where you're gonna park the cars unless you have a requirement for requiring a parking in the buildings that are gonna be built. So I'm not sure how much people are gonna comply to the the parking requirements and, and get approval anyway if we change the law. Parking is still gonna be a problem. So I mean, I'm not sure how this is gonna work. I mentioned to Jim, we, a couple of several years ago, we turned down an opportunity to build a multi-level parking garage in Lot B. I think we should talk seriously, not maybe at this meeting, but about seriously providing additional parking in that lot and see if we can get state funding or federal funding to build one. Because that would allow all of these things we're talking about to actually happen. Changing the law doesn't make anybody comply or be able to comply. I don't know where you would put any more parking in the village. There's no room. So I just, I just, just a thought. I, I don't have any problem with changing the zoning, but I don't see anyone being able to meet the requirements on parking. Even this one is a small building. He, she's not gonna be able to meet anything. We already said he's not out and I think he hasn't even included the retail spacing that he's got in the proposals. You know, yeah, just a thought.
Let's leave this particular project that it is and just deal with the TDD. Because that other project will have to meet whatever it ultimately becomes. But in light of what you just said about a parking debt, I, I should have put this in with the parking comment that I made. We're all aware that the theater is looking to put in millions of dollars in live entertainment. He is gonna need an enormous amount of parking if he gets the okay to do that. So it, it's all interconnected. That, that's the big uh, thing in the room right now is that. But if anybody else has other comments, let's, let's list them and see if they're relevant. Tim, Dan, anybody? Andrew, any comments?
What else did Paul have? Paul, what, what other comments did you have? Because the first two I think were spot on.
The next one says, suggests this only applies to new construction that, the proposal says existing buildings may be converted into TOD, providing they meet the use and bulk requirements. Uh, Paul says, suggests this only applies to new construction that has been built according to modern safety standards.
And we talked about that at the last meeting. I think, Jim, you felt the same, that given the current stock of buildings in, in the village that um, to convert one of them over to this district, which might be a problem.
I don't think any of them could, could hit any of the points that are in this bill the way it stands now. They don't have rear yards, no side yards. They're practically built next to each other, so they wouldn't even really have a shot at applying for this and getting approved.
All right, so you want that to be a comment?
Yeah, I think it should be in there. I mean, it's relevant. It's, it's really gonna be, as, as Paul said, it's gonna have to apply to new construction because the old stock, they don't have any rear yards, they don't have any side yards, and they definitely don't have any parking.
There's also a piece in there about balconies. And I'm kinda concerned. I think that should state about the rear or side of these buildings. Definitely not to the front overlooking Main Street. I'm sure we don't want balconies.
In conjunction with that, Dan, the way a certain proposal is proposed, the balconies would be on the sides of the building, which would mean on one side, it would overlook the strip mall that's currently been there for years. And the other side would overlook the post office, which I don't think anybody's gonna be thrilled with either one of those views. Unless it's the top floor, provided they get, you know, what they're asking for, which I don't see them getting six floors, but I could be wrong.
Are we talking about the project? Are we talking about the law right now?
Well, the only reason I brought it up is because i- i- in this project, they're talking about balconies.
Okay, gotcha.
The TDD proposal.
Doesn't it say something in the law about like encouraging balconies and stuff that I thought?
Yeah, John Lang had suggested that.
Yeah, it's in section A two. A two. That's what I, I don't know if we want balconies on Main Street overlooking Main Street, you know.
It's tricky, isn't it? Because things fall off balconies and, I don't know.
Yeah, rooftop, top gardens, I mean.
Well, that's, that's another thing I have, I have. It says, you know, to use the top floor for, uh, you know, usage, we, we need to put in there, they should have some kind of storage area for securing stuff during high winds. You know, secures, you know, umbrellas and all that stuff. I can just see all the stuff coming off.
Right. There's a lot of tweaking that needs to be done.
All right, so let's just, to go through Paul's last two comments regarding uh, the parking, which I think.
Parking, which we already talked about.
Right.
Now, the, the first comment, Rob, uh, I like Jim's comment about parking better, actually. I think he's, he's hit it right on the nail hard in the head. Um, and then the off-site parking issue. I don't think, if the law says that off-site par- per, sorry, can't speak. Off-site permit parking is a substitute for onsite parking. And my point was, here, I'll just read it. I found my notes. We have suggested the off-site parking for existing buildings in the past, but suggest it not be used for new development. The village does not track. The owners are paying for the parking. There is no verification process that people are using the lot parking instead of on-street parking, and there is no guarantee that the parking is reasonably close and, sorry, in reasonably close lots is going to be available in the future. I, I feel like if it's an existing building, building, we have to cut them a break because we wanna encourage business in the village. We don't wanna put some unreasonable parking requirement. We wanna give them the option. But if it's a new development, it's a brand-new building, they should, they should comply with the parking requirements. I, I don't think we should give them an out right, right from the first day. That's my position on that. I don't know. I'll defer to the board, but they, however they feel.
Good point, Paul.
So all parking has to be provided onsite. I mean, so we should just take out the requirement, you know, whatever it is. You just say what, you know. Well, I get, all right, so we'll just say all, all parking should be accounted for onsite.
Yeah, but Rob, I wouldn't take out the, um, I wouldn't take out the, the requirements for the parking. Um, I mean, as far as the amount of parking that they still need, right?
Right.
Right, okay.
And, and Rob, this, my first comment on the, on that sheet was about the project itself, not about the law.
Right.
The building was a tall building and it's gonna block sites' access to those existing shops, but that's not about the law. That's about the project, so probably shouldn't include that.
Okay.
Uh. Anyone else have a comment? Andy, Tim, anybody?
I, I think we got, I, I'm very happy with those comments.
Okay.
So what I'm gonna say is, um, the uh, parking, um, we can say parking is inadequate, um, should be 1.0 onsite for one bedrooms, 1.5 uh, for two bedrooms. Uh, all on, and all parking should be onsite. Uh, or at lea-, or, you know, and should all be onsite.
Um. New construction, Rob.
Well, I get, well, one of the other comments is should not allow conversion of existing buildings, only new construction. So which do you want?
I'm sorry, repeat that?
I thought one of the comments was gonna be should not allow conversion of buildings, should only be for new construction.
The zone should only apply to construction, right.
You said shouldn't allow.
My only concern with that is you have people there who, you know, own the building. Well, I mean, they can knock it down, I guess, but.
That's, that's the only alternative. They would have to break down.
Yeah. So then, so if that's gonna be one of the comments, you wouldn't even bother, you know, there's nothing to say about existing, right?
No, not really.
Well, if the law, if you can't do, if you can't convert an existing building.
I don't understand, Rob. I- i- in the, in the law, it said that it applies to existing and new construction.
Right, but you guys are saying make a comment that it should not allow a conversion of existing buildings. Or you're saying if you do allow it? Am I missing?
I think what we're saying is practically, the only way all the buildings on Lafayette or in that zone could comply is if they knocked down a building because there were no side yards. They are very tiny, if any, rear yards and no front yards. They front on the public sidewalk. So I think you're, you're saying they have an opportunity to convert, but it's not practical.
Yeah, I'm, I'm saying on page 20, it's item 266 dash 21.3, which strikes item 11. Delete item 11, which says existing buildings may be converted into.
Right, so I'm saying, why would then you address parking for existing buildings?
I don't think we are, are we?
I think the comment was more for new construction.
Right.
The minimum of one space for one bedroom and one and a half minimum
Right.
for a two-bedroom site.
Okay. So that was the comment, but then I thought somebody said something about existing buildings, but, so I wouldn't say anything about existing buildings.
Yeah, don't, don't say anything.
No, leave, leave that the way it is, but it's, it's not workable to my way of thinking.
Okay.
He's one of the board members.
Uh, should not allow conversion of existing buildings, only new construction. That's number three. I'm sorry, number two is, um, prefer that the comprehensive plan, uh, be um, can't read my own writing, considered first or, uh, conducted.
Yeah, I, I would.
Be reviewed.
Before we get into this new law.
And something like this uh, to be a part of that.
Right, they can consider this when they do the comprehensive plan and uh, come out with any adjustments that whoever is doing it feels would make it better.
All right, and then three is should not allow conversion of existing buildings, only new construction. Uh, and, you know, I mean, that, you know, you may tweak uh, somewhat, but um, you know, I don't know if that means you have to eliminate like the entirety of a building. I can't think of an example where you would wanna leave half a building or something.
No, if it, if it's a historic building, like I know in New York, there's a lot of cases where they keep the historic facade, then they put a new building.
That's what I mean, something like that, you know. So maybe we'll just, we'll put that in as should not allow conversion, only new construction, and see what they wanna do with it, and then should not allow for balcony. Or, well, I guess the issue is, you know, if it's in the appropriate spot, you know, you want no balcony at all, or?
If it's an empty lot and you're building a new building and the balconies are gonna face the mountains or, you know, any nice view, then they should be allowed. If it's gonna face Main Street, I, you know, I don't think it's appropriate. And if it's so close to another building, what's the point in having a balcony?
Doesn't the law say that that should be encouraged? Maybe just don't mention it, because then the developer can put in balconies.
Yeah, yeah, why don't we just say, uh, um, something like that, say.
Where appropriate.
Cause that, yeah, uh, I'm trying to find it. Oh, yeah, that was, uh, I remember John had suggested that he, um, that should provide balconies, maybe we just take it out, just uh, should, one, should be silent on balconies.
Yeah. Rob, I don't wanna harp on the existing building thing, but I, I don't think we should phrase it the way, well, in my opinion, you shouldn't phrase it the way you said it. It does like, like a massive conversion, like of the, I don't know, Lyric Theater. If someone were to really convert that, that would be new construction in my mind. Maybe just delete that item 11 on the uh, page 20, which references the existing building.
Well, existing buildings may be converted provided they meet the use and bulk requirements. But I get, that's, you know, that kinda goes to Jim's point, you know, maybe, again, sitting here, I don't know, but maybe there is an existing one. It's not just CB, it's GB also.
Yeah, I don't.
Maybe there is an existing one that could possibly meet, make it, but, so if you just take it out.
I don't think it would be safe because they don't have proper egress, you know, a lot of the egress goes through a garden. Build alley and things like that.
Right, but that would be part of site plan and, you know, I hear what you're saying, but that, you know, it's not like somebody would be able to build something that would not meet fire code or anything like that, but I mean, maybe if you take out 11 and again, stay silent on it.
Maybe strike it so that, yeah, stay silent on it. Well, I, yeah.
The law should be silent on balconies, leave it up to particular uh,
Particular project.
The particular project.
We wanted to stay silent on balconies except for balconies facing 59, right, or Lafayette?
Well, but why don't we say this? Law should be silent on balconies, leave it up to a particular project if appropriate, you know.
If appropriately just planning boards.
As determined by well, village board and planning board. Well, village board and planning board, because village board will be doing the zone change.
Right.
Um, so what do you want to say on the e- existing buildings?
Uh, I don't know, I, I think maybe, the only thing, the, only problem I have with what you said was you said conversion, is to me, conversion means you're like. Gutting something and completely rebuilding it according to the modern building code, um, so I, I think. We should emphasize that it only applies. To buildings built according to modern safety standards or, or something, I don't know, um.
Can you read what you just said again, Rob? What did you say again?
I mean, once you start, you know, converting a building. You gotta meet everything, you know, no fire inspector's gonna say, uh, well, you know, that's dangerous, but we gotta allow it because it's from nineteen thirty, you know.
So what was your, what was your word, wording, Rob, what were you suggesting?
Well, I said, well, based on your thing, I said should not allow for conversion of existing buildings, only new construction, but. This, let, think of the reasoning for this, existing buildings may be converted, provided they meet. Use and bulk requirements as set forth herein. Um.
Yeah, but I, just looking at, yeah.
I mean, I guess my point is if your, if your concern is it, it's an old building. Again, they, then, whatever they do, they gotta meet current standards.
I, I don't know if that's true, though, because old buildings are grandfathered in and it doesn't, the zoning change doesn't necessarily trigger. An increase in the code, it, it, as long as it complied with whatever, the nineteen thirty-eight code, then, and I, they're, the fire marshal can't make them update it.
Yes, no, yes, they can, when it's, when you're doing, when you're changing the use, absolutely, they're, they're changing the use, so. If that's your concern, I mean, maybe add something.
But there are apartments downstairs, I, I don't know.
They need use and bulk requirements and, and, um, you know, update, you know, uh, current, current building codes.
Must be up current codes.
Or could we just say only to apply to new construction and not say. I don't know, I'm, now I'm beating the horse to death, I don't want to do that, uh.
I think if we add the thing about it, you know, must be built to current, uh, code with no, you know. To current building codes, that, I think that addresses your concern, if that's your concern. That addresses it, we say, look, it's, and, and, again, I, I, I don't think it's necessary, but I think it, 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 um.
It highlights.
It reinforces the point to address your concern.
Right.
Okay, that, that really is my concern, that, like, a lot of the, like, there's apartments downtown now, I wouldn't want someone. Just changing the zone and everything being okay, because I, I look at those buildings and I think, see them as death traps. You know, you have to egress through an alley that's strewn with garbage in a lot of cases, it's, uh.
Yeah, yeah, but Paul, I think, I think. Addition to that, if it has to be up to health and safety codes would cover that.
Yeah.
And if they're willing to spend the money to upgrade, then, uh, they should be allowed to.
Yeah, I think I have the language at U V.
I agree with that, that's right.
And I'll, I'll, I'll send us in an email to everybody, and if you want to tweak the language after I send it, you know, maybe, let me, let me try to come up with something on that.
Yeah, that, that is the concern, Rob, it's safety, I, I just worry about safety, that's it, that's all my.
I got you, okay, so, uh. Let me just think for a second. Yeah, let me work on that one a little bit. Well, I'll, uh, I'll send something to you. To everybody, and then if everybody's in agreement.
Alright.
I'll ask, I'll send it to Joanne to prepare a memo to send to the board, the village board. All right.
Okay.
I also have a concern under section B. It says buildings may be completely residential or mixed-use or commercial residential. I, I'm not sure if we want, or, I mean, my feeling is on Main Street, everything completely residential. It also says on section four, residents on the first floor are permitted. I, I don't think on Main Street we should have residents.
Why not?
Shouldn't allow that. What, on, on Main Street? On the first floor, instead of a store, instead of having a store or, or a commercial business, we're gonna have a residence?
Well, it's, it may be allowed, it doesn't say it has to be allowed. Now, there's so many stores downtown, and as we all know, over the years, there were many vacant floors downtown. So if we can't bring in businesses that are going to attract business, maybe that's not a bad option. On a case-by-case basis. But it's up to everybody.
Okay, I'm just putting it out there, it's my, just, that's my opinion, so.
Again, I, you know, my opinion, and I'm not on the board. Would be it to, uh. Uh, I, I, I think it gives the flexibility, and if a project comes in with residents on the first floor, you know, next to Lafayette Theater, you say that's not appropriate, you know. This one in particular, they happened to do the petition. I, I mean, I'm trying to picture it in my head, if it were all on the first floor, it kind of would come out, you know, into that parking lot anyway, you know what I mean, like, it's, it. It, it's not necessarily conducive to having, um. Commercial, but, you know, I mean, I, I, you know, I think if you leave that option.
I think it would be up to the planning board to, uh, kind of stop that from hap- happening in an inappropriate, in a non-appropriate place. It's just an option, it's, it, it wouldn't be by right, would it, Rob?
Well, no, I mean, it would be either one, you know, if, if, an applicant could come in and show residents on the first floor. And, um, you know, it's about the zone change, so the, the board does not have to. Meet the zone change, frankly, even if it meets all of the criteria of the code, you know, it's still a, a specific. Zone change to apply it to this particular, to whatever particular piece of property that, you know, somebody applies for, so. You know, if it's not appropriate, you know, it'll come to this board, and you guys can say, yeah, all residential, you know. I'm just thinking, uh, you know, on Wayne Avenue, sure, but, you know, uh, one across from Dunkin' Donuts, maybe not, you know.
Yeah, I think, I think that should be at the discretion of the boards.
Oh, Jim, I, I, I don't want this to get lost in translation, I, I'm not a big fan of this law, I'm not sure if you can tell that or not. Um, but I am a big fan of making sure that, like I said, that if, at a later date, if, let's say we have a, a planner or whatever else that decides that they might, that they think that this might be a good idea, that they use these suggestions. Um, but I, I don't want it to be misrepresented, that was where, that all of us are in agreement, we, maybe everybody else is in agreement, I, I might not be, or whatever else. But us as a board. I, I wanted to make sure that. They kind of know whether we're in agreement with this or not in agreement with this at this time, but these are the concerns that we have about it. You know what I'm saying, like, I would like some sort of. Um, communication sent to the board in reference to that as well, even if we took a vote and just about what everybody thinks about it.
A- Andrew, I think that's the purpose of our comments, to say that as it stands. We are not in favor of it, that's why we are making the comments, I don't think we have to come out and specifically say whether we're in favor or not. We're in favor of, if this goes through, we would like to see our comments taken into consideration.
I mean, I agree with Andrew, I'm really not in favor, to me, this is spot zoning, pure and simple, and I'm not in favor of that, so. Do we, do we want to make a comment about spot zoning or something like that?
It, it, let me just say that, it's not spot zoning, I'll, I'll, we'll discuss that in a minute. The, the, um, what, what may address Andrew's, uh. Issue maybe to put that, what I'm putting number two, put it number one. Is, you know, something to the effect of the board has reviewed the, you know, uh, proposal, the law has the following comment. You know, the planning board suggests that the village board, um, not entertain this law at this time until such time, you know, and again, it's subject to me writing it out. Until such time as, um.
Comprehensive plan.
More formal comprehensive plan is, uh, you know, investigated, reviewed, and, and, you know, because the comprehensive plan, that, you know, they have, uh. Uh, public hearings, you have, you know, public input, et cetera, so if that's your first comment, I think that may get your point across, Andrew, is that?
Robert, Rob, I, I would agree, I, I, and that would, that would actually make, I, I, I would think that that would make a lot of sense, but I, I just want to make sure that the other board members feel the same, I don't want to be, uh. I don't want to push anybody into anything that they don't feel comfortable with.
No, there's, there's gonna be a lot of review. If they hold to the recommendation to wait for the recommendations of the planners who are doing the comprehensive plan. And as Rob said, there will be public hearings at the village board level, and I'm sure we can have public hearings at all of them. And then we could give them a final recommendation once the board is.
And I agree, I agree with what Rob said, putting it first is, is right, but Rob, why is it not spot zoning, I actually looked up spot zoning's definition, and it says. Spot zoning is the definition of zoning to a specific parcel or parcels of land within a larger zoned area. When the zoning is usually at odds with the city's master plan and current zoning restriction, that sounds exactly like.
Right, but.
Why do you think?
Hudson, can you, uh, I've got to mute you. It wasn't Hudson, who was making the noise? Is it me, can you guys see me?
Yeah, I can see you.
Yeah.
Hudson, are you there?
No, maybe I'm doing it.
No, you're. I think it's Hudson, I, he's, he looks frozen. Okay, I put him in the waiting room, try to bring him back. I didn't kick him out, because if I kick him out, I don't think he can get back in. Then he's been in the waiting room long enough, we let him back in?
Yeah, let's do it.
Penalty box, time's expired.
I like that, that's pretty, I, I feel like I'm in control. Hold on. All right, you're back, Hudson, can you? You're, you're out of your timeout, I'm asking to unmute unless you want to stay muted.
Stop playing music, though.
Get off the CB radio. Yeah, the only thing I'll say. I may boot them a few years ago. The only thing, uh, with respect to spot zoning, you know, the way, you know, there's a, there's a plethora of case law on it, and what I would say is, you know. Uh, and, you know, I see Seth Mandelbaum was on, who's an attorney who I'll, I'll chat with about tomorrow, but, you know, spot zoning is in the eye of the. Any. I'm gonna. Hudson, I'm gonna put you in the waiting room again. Um. You know, so the, the, the way I, you know, kind of look at it is, you know, spot zoning is. You know, a ridiculous example would be, you know, all right, I want to put a, you know, uh, nuclear power plant on Lafayette Avenue, or, um. You know, some, some, something that just is not in, uh, harmony with existing uses. You know, downtown is littered with commercial, which it has, it's littered with residential, which it has. Now, I, I, I hear what you're saying, you're saying, well, we're just, you know, somebody's coming in from one property and saying, well, let me do this. Again, take a big picture, step back, that's the purpose of the floating zone, is to say, look, we're looking at the entire zone, and if you meet these criteria. You can get this designation, if you will, so I guess the, the point is, um. You know, it's, it's, it, it's, it's a little bit of a nuanced thing to.
Yeah.
You know, just say spot zoning, you know, again, from my perspective and looking at, at cases on what spot zoning is. It, my feeling is it doesn't fit the definition of that, so I don't think it should go in the comments, I understand what you're saying about. It applying to specific properties and not others, and maybe we can, again, do a nuanced comment on that, but I, I would. Prefer to stay away from the quote-unquote words, spot zoning, because.
All right, well, Rob, you're the lawyer, you know more, better than I, so if you don't think it's applicable, and.
Yeah, I mean, you know, for the reasons I stated, I'm not, you know, looking at it hard times, more, you know, um. I'll, maybe I'll send you some cases on it, just because, again, what, and this comes up all the time, whenever you're changing a zone. People say, hey, you know, isn't that spot zoning, again, it, it's more when it's not, you know, I'm trying to think, you know, the village is so small, so it's hard to kind of. Take it, um, you know, it's really, it, it often comes up in, in larger areas where, you know, maybe there's all farms, and then all of a sudden they want to do something. You know, or put a gas station or something, so. You know.
Uh, it's just that that comment has come. From the county planning, where, and I, I understand that it's nuanced, it's come for, like, Washington Ave, which was a big residential. Project in the middle of the sort of, I, I think that's General Business District over there, isn't it? So, so they, they actually reference spot, spot zoning, but it sounds like, I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, I, and, and you don't.
You want to comment.
I, I, I kind of agree in that, perhaps in that instance, um, again, a judge may disagree, but, um. That's the purpose of this law, is to say, look, we've looked at it, we're saying everywhere in this zone could have this, so. You know, that takes out the spot zone, you know what I mean, instead of doing one individual property at a time under TDD, for instance, like we did with, um. With the Sheldon, you know, and the other issue I just want to bring up, you know, MR fifty, every time the village tries to do something under MR fifty. County planning comes back and says, and, let me try to let Hudson back in. County planning comes back and says, um. You know, your MR fifty, you're, you're nev- nobody ever meets the requirements of MR fifty, so either change it. Or don't, or don't, you know, change the zone definitions and, and bulk requirements, or don't approve these projects, you know, so, and we've done neither.
Yeah.
But, um, I just think, you know, I, I say, wait a minute, here's what I'm gonna suggest. I'm gonna make, I'm gonna put these comments together. So it's in writing, everybody will see it, if there's any proposed additions, just shoot an email back to everybody. And this, and.
Okay, sounds good.
You good, Jim?
Uh.
I'm asking you to unmute, you can try to unmute yourself, Jim. Hudson, do you want to hang up and call back in, I think we're almost done, but. Jim, you can unmute yourself.
Okay.
All right.
Okay.
Penalty box again.
One sixty-six, Wayne Avenue. Has put in an application for that project, which was originally. Passed in twenty-ten. They need to start over due to the. Eleven years that have passed, so we, we need to declare ourselves lead agency. If I can get a motion for that.
Intention to be lead agency.
I'll, I'll make a motion to declare that the planning board intends to become lead agency.
Perfect.
All in favor?
Second, by Dan.
All in favor, aye, any?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, I don't hear any no's, so it passes. The second thing on this project is. We are going to send it out for review by all the agencies involved, be it the DEC, the, uh. The Highway Department, the county. So as not to delay any possible movement in this project. Can I get a motion for that?
Yeah, I, I'll make a, I'll make a motion to send it out, yes.
Okay, who seconds it?
I, Paul second.
Paul seconds it, all in favor?
Aye.
Go ahead.
Uh, I was, I was gonna say for anybody on, for anybody who's on here that, that's not familiar with the project, but I, it's the whole board here, so. I, I thought that there were other people on, online here.
No, it's just us, it's just us.
Gotcha.
There may be others listening, but they're not, they're not, this isn't a public hearing, so they're not.
Well, by the way, people may, uh, this gets recorded, so people may look at it, so if you had a comment, Andrew, you can make it.
No, I was just curious if, 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 uh, Jim could just give everybody what, ju- just a quick, a, a quick, brief synopsis of what the project was, just for anybody that was listening, that's all. Because it was eleven years.
It's a couple of buildings with multiple units in it, it's like townhouses. But. But uh, we'll get into that further on, because we're gonna have to review it all. I think Joanne and I are the only two people that know anything about it, Joanne, because she was on the board, and me. Because I sat through the meetings, as it's across the street, basically, from where I live.
I I was, I hate to admit it, because it shows my age, but I was on the board for this one as well. Jim, there was a, there was an email from the lawyer that Joanne forwarded, was that?
Hudson, I'm sorry. You're causing disruption. By being mean, you guys tell me.
No, no, it's, it's hard to, it's hard to hear.
It is, you can't, it's disruption.
Those emails have been addressed by both Joanne, myself, and uh, Rob McGreen, you know, so. We'll work our way through that as it comes more clear to everyone.
I mean, the reality is, eleven years, and there's been so many projects approved in the time, it's kind of a different village. So I, I can, I, I see your point.
Right, right, but we addressed all that at the time, Paul, so there's no, no need to get into it now.
Okay.
The other thing that I bring to your attention is, our next meeting is scheduled for June sixteenth. Live and in person. So has anybody got comments on that?
No.
Did anybody hear me?
What time is it?
Yeah, Jim.
Sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, what, what time, Jim?
Uh, we're gonna try for seven, right, Rob?
Yeah, seven works for me, doesn't work for you guys.
Uh, yep, that works.
Anybody?
Nope, that'll work.
Where are we gonna meet? Are we gonna do this in the auditorium? Village Hall on the sixteen. I'm sorry, I didn't hear that. That, are we gonna meet in the room, or are we gonna go to the auditorium? We're going to the Village Hall Auditorium. Okay. Even though this, the uh, distance and all that is gonna be thrown out, I think as of tomorrow, right, Rob? But we will maintain a a proper distance, just for safety's sake.
The distance and the masks are out if you're vaccinated.
I'm not gonna ask them to show their papers, so. We'll, we'll just assume that we'll keep a responsible distance between us. And if anyone is uncomfortable, they can wear. Okay, so until then, we will wait for Rob's comments, and if we have any comments. Uh, you want us to get back to you, Rob, or?
Yeah, well, I'll send it to everybody and uh, you know, we can share it.
Okay.
When we have final, ask Joanne to send it on the letterhead.
Okay. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion.
I'll give you.
Oh, Andrew, go ahead, Andrew.
No, no, I was gonna say, you go ahead, I'll second you.
All right, there we go.
So Paul made the motion, Andrew seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
And I know no, they know. All right, have a good night, hope to see you around the village now that we can get out a little bit.
Be great.
Okay, take care.
You guys have a good night.
Good night, guys.